Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Cola Poniewich.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella. He's present, right?
He was all across the street.
Okay. Ms. Antellas.
Here.
Mr. Braverman.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Larry.
Here.
Mr. Masters.
Here.
Mr. Tesler.
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have the quorum.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has poised notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted June 15, 2012. One at all schools, two, Home News Tribune, three Cranberry Press, and four filed with the Clerk of the municipality. Since it looks like we have a really packed agenda this evening, we will try to get through this as quickly as possible. So we will be going to number five, a presentation of the Monroe Education Foundation grants, and I will turn this over to Mr. Ira Tesler, who is the President of the Monroe Education Foundation.
Michael, Mr. Chiarella is here.
Yes. So noted. Good. Good evening, everybody. I'll stand here so everybody can see me. One of the other hats I wear besides being on the Board of Ed is I'm President of the Monroe Education Foundation. And the Monroe Ed Foundation is a nonprofit group in town. We raise money for the school district by various fundraisers that we hold during the year. And for a shameless plug, we have our golf outing coming up on July 10th. If anybody's interested in playing golf, sponsoring a hole, tee hole, tee sign, whatever, please check out our website at www-monroe-edfoundation.org. If you would like to join and help out the foundation, all you have to do is show up at a meeting. The calendar is also up on our website. When we raise the money every year, we, each spring, we send out applications to all the teachers in the district for grants. Each teacher can, if they choose to do so, can apply for a $2,000 grant. And depending upon our budget, we meet and decide who gets the grants. And this is our fun night tonight. We get to give away money. And to keep this brief, we'll just start off by awarding the grants. The first one is... Get on your green for Applegarth Elementary School. That's good order to you, Cindy Hills. Rich Hills. Mr. V., Principal of Applegarth. And Bonnie Burke Supervisor. And Karen O'Connell. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
The next one is Monroe Township Middle School, Serving Up Success. Crystal Greeney. Patricia Van Gordon. Doug Glassmacher. And that's it. Congratulations. Thank you. Next one, Barclaybrook School, Uncovering the Mysteries of Our Galaxy, Second Grade, Shooting for the Stars. And that goes to Kristen Miller. And Patricia Dinsmore. Next one is Out of This World Discovery, Scientific Inquiry of Our Solar System for Mill Lake School. And that goes to Dennis Quinn, Denise Quinn. I've had a long day at work. I totally apologize. And Tamir Lopez. And Melissa Fletcher. And Karen... Karen Boraski, thank you. And Brooke Krieger. Thank you. The next one, Circus Around the World for Barclaybrook Elementary School for Erin Lahoney Principal. There you are. Congratulations. And we have five, also for Barclaybrook Elementary School, Penguins on Parade, Sarah Richards. Denise... Danielle.
Puglisi.
Puglisi, thank you. Lisa McQ, no, I just pronounced that one. Ashley Pepe. And Catherine Rosa. And that's it. And this is part of the agenda, but on behalf of the Monroe Township Education Foundation, I'd like to present the check for $9,245 to the Board of Ed.
Thank you. I think Mr. Gorski will appreciate that check, as will Dr. Hamilton. I also want to recognize Ms. Amy Antellas because she is the treasurer of the Monroe Education Foundation. And the Monroe Education Foundation is an excellent organization that has supported the Board of Education in supporting us with grants and funding. So they do an excellent job, and any help that you can give them will be much appreciated. So at this time, we have a lot of recognition to give our district. So we will start with the support staff and go into the retirees. I'm going to ask Dr. Hamilton to help with giving out some of the plaques that we have.
Each year, we recognize staff members who are identified by their peers as worthy of recognition for the Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Person of the Year. We did the Teacher of the Year earlier in the year, and at this time, we are going to recognize our support staff for the year. As soon as I figure out how Jeff sorted them. The resolution reads, whereas the Board of Education in the Township of Monroe County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, has been apprised of the following person's name, be it resolved by the Board of Education, Township of Monroe County of Middlesex in the State of New Jersey, that the said Board of Education hereby wishes to acknowledge the support person of the year and the Board's appreciation for her services, and whereas it is desired to express appreciation for her years of faithful service, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe that it does hereby express its warm appreciation and heartfelt thanks for the dedicated and faithful service and the performance of her duties as Principal Secretary, and that with and of the integrity with which she continues to carry out her responsibilities. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this Board of Education, and that a copy of it be given to Barbara Lonsack, passed unanimously by the Township Board of Education. The next resolution is presented to the Support Staff of the Year for Oak Tree School, Rosina Ventro. And for Woodland School, Margaret Nesby. For Barclaybrook School, Kimberly Martini. She's not here this evening, and I know Debbie Van Lu is not here for the high school. Rob, you want to take this for Debbie? And this is the Principal Secretary. For Brookside, Kim Walker. Okay, our next area of recognition will be for our retirees. And the resolution reads, whereas the Board of Education of the Town of Monroe County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, has been apprised of the retirement of James Kirchner, Teacher of Health and PE at Monroe Township High School, be it resolved by the Board of Education, Township of Monroe County of Middlesex in the State of New Jersey, that the said Board of Education wishes to acknowledge its appreciation for the services rendered to the students and citizens of Monroe Township. Whereas it is desired to express recognition for the many years of faithful service, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe that it does hereby express its warm appreciation and heartfelt thanks for the dedicated and faithful service and the performance of his duties and of the integrity with which he carried out those responsibilities and regrets the loss of such a respected employee. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Education, and that a copy be given to said employee, passed unanimously by the Township of Monroe Board of Education at its regular meeting on June 20. And this is signed by the Board President, Kathy Kalaponowicz, and Board Secretary, Mike Gorski. Is Jim here? Jim is not here. Okay. Joan Venselowski, Teacher of Social Studies, Monroe Township Middle School. Patricia Lovrick, Power Professional at Oak Tree School. Sandra Klein, Power Professional from Monroe Township Middle School. Rose Marie Benjamin, Teacher of Italian, Monroe Township High School. And last but not least, Diana Basm... Basmason, Teacher of Science, Monroe Township High School. And that concludes our recognition portion for our support staff and our retirees. Oh, you want to do Jonathan? Okay. And next on the list is the Student Representative Recognition for the Board of Education, and I'll let our Board President do that. No, he has to keep his name tag.
Jonathan, would you like to come up here? Certificate of Appreciation presented to Mr. Jonathan Kim and sincere appreciation for your dedicated service to the students and schools of Monroe Township while serving as a student board member of the Monroe Township Board of Education from 2010 to 2012. And this is for you.
Thank you. Very, very appreciate it. Thank you.
And I just have a couple things to mention about Jonathan. Jonathan will be attending the Berklee College of Music. He will be majoring in Vocal Performance and Music Engineering. He also told me, he assured me, that someday we will be watching him in a musical performance on Broadway. We look forward to that. We could say that's a Monroe student. While he was in the high school, he participated in the Student Council, FBLA, FCA, NHS, TRI M Society, Honor Society, the Drama Club as an International Thesbian Society. So we wish you continued best luck in college, and we hope that you come back to visit us often.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll go to our Student Board Members' Reports.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Senior picnic was held June 6th. Senior prom was June 8th. ACT testing took place at the high school on June 9th. And the marking period for ended June 13th.
Okay, and the final exams were June 14th through June 19th. The final exam makeups will be June 20th through the 21st. And the senior class of 2012 will be graduating at the Sun National Bank Center in Trenton, New Jersey on Friday, June 22nd. And if you just allow me, I'd just like to thank the Board for just the experience that you guys have allowed me to have these past couple of years. And just thank you for being so lenient and understanding at times and throughout my life as I progress, and I give back to my community, whether it is through my music or any other practice, I'll definitely keep in mind to follow by your example. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. And you, I know you have to leave because you have to participate, so please, go ahead. It's Senior Week, we have a lot to do. Number nine on the agenda, Student Presentation, Dare to Dream. I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you. I received a request from a staff member, and I'll ask her to come and introduce our students who will present this evening. But I'd like to present to the Board Erica Friedman, who is a teacher here in our district, and she will introduce our students.
The Dare to Dream Student Leadership Conference is a conference that's held in several locations throughout the State of New Jersey, sponsored by the New Jersey Department of Education, Office of Special Education Programs. And each year, our students, since I've been taking them since 2005, have participated at the conference as either keynote speakers. And this year was no different. We had keynote speakers, two from Monroe Township, as well as all 15 students that attended the conference also conducted and facilitated a breakout session called What Is Your Work Personality? Each of the 15 students took a part. The conference is run by students, a conference for students run by students, for students with disabilities, but what I prefer to say, it is a conference for students with capabilities. The students have been very fortunate from, by administration and the Board of Education here each year to get approval to go to the conference, and I do appreciate that, and they have benefited from the participation. All our students that go have demonstrated exemplary self-advocacy skills and leadership skills. And the two students that are here tonight as keynotes, I'd like to first present to you Samantha Mishler, who has inspired me in the four years that she has been here, and I hope that her speech tonight will also inspire you. And then after Samantha, we will have Darshan Patel.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Friedman. As most parents do, mine taught me what words were and were not appropriate. Among the list of words never to say was the certain four-letter word which most of us use in our daily vocabulary. You are all probably thinking of every four-letter profane word in the dictionary. But the word that I'm talking about is can't. My parents told us that if we said we could not do something, we were admitting defeat before we really tried. If I ever said that I could not do something after only trying it once or twice, my parents made me try it again. The omission of the word can't from my vocabulary helps me to achieve as much as I have, turning no you can't into yes you can. My story began, like most, before I can even remember. Every, like every new parent, mine had high expectations for me when I was a baby. However, those expectations were temporarily diminished when they were told I had a cyst in my brain. I was also diagnosed with optic atrophy, caused by a weakness of the optic nerve. As if that weren't enough, I also developed my stagnus, an involuntary movement of the eyes. During my early childhood, milestones that almost every child achieves easily took me much longer. For instance, riding a bike. My dad worked with me for countless hours. It was difficult and frustrating. My mom thought that I might be more independent if I used a special bike, one with three wheels instead of two. Yes, I ride a giant tricycle, but the bike keeps in balance so I can focus on watching where I'm going. My greatest milestone was learning to accept help, something I had only achieved during my freshman year of high school. Throughout my education, I have had personal aides. In elementary school, they helped me through lunch, recess, and gym class. In middle school and high school, they helped me navigate the halls and manage my visual aids. In the fourth grade, my teacher helped me read notes from the overhead projector by using my monocular comfortably. Later, I decided to use my closed-circuit television for tests and important assignments. I also used a computer equipped with Zoom text to enlarge the screen. In seventh grade, I signed up to join the cross-country team. My father trained with me throughout the summer to push a little harder, even if I felt I couldn't. Now that I am a senior on the track team, I hear myself using those same encouraging words with my peers that my father used with me. I have been a member of the varsity cross-country team all four years of high school, and have also been a member of the track team for both winter and spring for just as long. I have been able to run with a visual impairment because I have had guide runners or people to run alongside with me to help point out things such as sticks, trees, or even other people that I might miss due to my lack of peripheral vision. During my years of high school, I have participated in many activities while maintaining a 3.65 GPA and a rank of 97 in my class of 383. I have participated in the National and Spanish Honor Societies and the Mixed and Women's Choruses. I also enrolled in the Senior Option Program at Mill Lake Elementary School. I have been participating in the Teaching Mentorship Program at Mill Lake, an elementary school in my town that I had attended. The program truly tested my self-advocacy skills. My teacher was planning on putting me in a different school across town from where I wanted to work. I told her that I knew the Mill Lake building inside and out, and that in the event of an emergency, I would be finding someone to go to. Speaking up allowed me to go to Mill Lake. As for my plans for the future, my aspirations are endless. I plan to attend Rider University in the fall with a major of Education and a minor in Spanish. Now that my time at Monroe Township High School is coming to an end, there are several people without whom I might not be standing here today. First, I would like to thank my family for helping me achieve my goals. I would also like to thank my guidance counselor, Ms. Udell, my caseworker, Mrs. McGee, my aide, Mrs. Sigismando, and also a special thanks to the Commission for the Blind and all of my teachers at Monroe Township High School. Finally, thank you, Dr. Hamilton, and the Monroe Township Board of Education for allowing me to speak here tonight and for the education I have received here in Monroe. If there was one lesson I could leave you with today, it would be to never say can't. Turn dreams into goals. After all, a dream means nothing unless you strive to achieve it.
Okay, and now Darshan Patel.
Thank you, Ms. Friedman. Good evening. My name is Darshan Patel. I will be graduating from Monroe Township High School in two days. I have a language and learning disability, and this has been a bit of a challenge to deal with. I usually don't like speaking in front of people, really I don't. But it's like your parents always say, you got to face your fear sooner or later. When I was born, I had an early language delay. This was caused by constant ear infections when I was a baby. By the time I was three, I had bilateral tubes placed in my ears. Think about how bad that hurts. Because of this situation, I attended a preschool handicapped program, then half a day kindergarten and half a day pre-first. My stuttering was first brought to attention when I was five years old. When I reached elementary school, I received speech and language therapy and continued with it all throughout third grade. I first realized I had a problem in the fourth grade when I moved to Monroe Township. That was when my anxiety really started to emerge. At the time, I was in three resource classes and three mainstream classes. Math was fine, but reading and language were areas of weakness for me. I had difficulty putting my ideas into sentences and paragraphs. Social studies and science and health were an even bigger issue. I would sit in front of the room, and most of the time, I didn't really understand what was going on. I would go into shutdown mode and stare off into the distance. And in result, I did not do any of my homework that was assigned, and therefore my grades dropped. Toward the end of the year, my in-class support teacher had a conference with my parents and told them that because of the extent of my learning disability, I would do better in smaller classes for next year. I moved to all resource classes in the fifth grade, and my grades improved tremendously. That was the extra help that I needed for my education. A lot has changed since then. I've gone from all resource classes to only one. Language arts is still the number-one weakness I have, but I took a big step this year. I decided to go into a mainstream language arts class. I was nervous, but I went in there with an open mind and a positive attitude. Boy, did I struggle. The first marking period, I got a 76. It hit me hard because I usually don't get Cs on my report card, but that didn't stop me from working harder. In the second marking period, I got an 82. I was happy, and I felt like me again. Unfortunately, that was short-lived until the third marking period. I got a 69. I was angry, frustrated, and miserable. I confronted one of my teachers, but they didn't care what I had to say. After a long talk with my parents, all they told me, all I could do was to move on. I got over it. I'm proud to say that my fourth marking period grade is an 89. Another big step I took was try out some college classes as part of the high school scholars program. I took sociology and criminal justice at Middlesex County College. I knew it wasn't going to be easy. Once again, I was right. On my sociology midterm, I got a 45. Luckily, my professor provided lots of extra credit, so I got my grade up to at least a C. I ended up getting an A- in that class. The next year, I took criminal justice. This time, I knew what was expected of me. On the midterm, I got a 68. It was better than my last exam. The professor did provide extra credit in that class as well. My grade in the class was a C. I could not have gone this far without the help of my friends and my family. I would just like to say thank you to my parents and grandparents for guiding me and pushing me to do the best of my ability. I would like to thank my friends for being by my side and simply just saying, you're going to be fine, you're a smart person. Next, I would like to thank Mrs. Jody Rubenstein and Sharon Abt, and Mrs. Sharon Abtaker. Thank you to Mrs. Jody Rubenstein for being my tutor, teacher, and a friend all throughout elementary and middle school. Thank you, I mean, lastly, thank you to Mrs. Sharon Abtaker, my case manager, for keeping me on my feet and encouraging me to make those big steps in my education. I cannot wait to attend Middlesex County College for the 2012, 2013 year. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you. These are two success stories in what we are, we have coming out of Monroe, and we're very proud of you, and we hope that you will continue on and be very successful. And we're happy that you're a product of Monroe Township, because this is what we do. We educate kids, and I think we have a staff and a district that's second to none, and you're proof of that. So thank you, and continued good luck and success. Okay, at this time, number 10 on the agenda is the New iPad Refreshment Initiative, and I think I will hand this over to Dr. Gorman.
I have no refreshments.
I have no refreshments. Okay. I guess, Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Leary, you'd like me to recap where we were and where we're going. Okay, so on June 12th, there was a finance and a curriculum committee meeting, and it was in response to year two of the iPad initiative, what happens next primarily with the iPad twos based on the lessons learned. So, we reviewed the curriculum committee meeting from June 8th and the board of education meeting that I presented at on June 8th. We talked about the lessons learned there. We talked about how on pace we are with current digital technology and the PARC assessment system, which is a new online assessment that'll replace the HESPA and NJASK in the future, and tablets, and iPads are an acceptable usage for every kid to be taking these assessments in the year 2014 and 2015. And then, we talked about what the next steps are that were presented to the board of education last year as a way to sustain the initiative. So, the best, there were two basic options. One was to sell some of the iPads that we currently have, and then to, or possibly, enter into a lease purchase to get the newest and the best for the students and to get the most value out of the iPad twos. One of the pitfalls of selling is that the board of education is not an authorized reseller of equipment. We would be looking at some tax evasion problems if we became a reseller of iPads, so we're not a store, we're a public board of education, so that's not our business. And then, it might be choppy in the management of setting prices, expectations out to consumers, the whole nine yards. So, the presentation that I presented to the board was based on the best option for year two. So, the best option was presented on school districts, which, based on evidence and data of large technology lease purchases, deployments of big initiatives, and the majority of them are done on a lease purchase manner. And that way, the board of education commits monies to digital technology, and then each year, we're making a lease purchase towards possibly refreshing. So, tonight, there is two motions in front of you that was approved by both the finance and the curriculum committee. One would be to sell the existing iPad twos to the highest bidder, and one would be to enter into a lease purchase, a three-year lease purchase, which would cost the board of education nothing next year, but it would be in subsequent budgets each year to refresh the existing batch and enter into the new iPads for all the students next year. Three driving reasons. Number one, with the onset of digital textbooks, the new iPad is 32 gigs versus 16 gigs, and we've had some discussion on whether that, we would max out of memory or not, and we're not really sure, but that was one part of the presentation. The other part was the cost of breakages. And so, with the new Apple Care Plus program, with the new iPad, it's a, you get two free replacements for $49, as opposed to where we were with the Apple Care now, which costs $269 per breakage. So, we feel that the Apple Care Plus would lend towards significant savings in managing the devices as we move back. The committees asked for more accountability and to set goals for breakages and more evidence of usage by all students and staff members in the building as we enter into a one-to-one learning initiative into year two. The point was made that this first year was a year of exploration, and that we only had, the kids only had the iPads actually for about six months. So, in that year of exploration, we're now ready to enter into phase two. The last reason is the sustainability of the initiative. So, it's estimated that if we waited another year to enter a lease purchase, the current value of the iPad twos would reduce by close to $200,000. So, right now, our best guesses are that we could get about $480,000 for the one batch. A year from now, if we come back a year from now and ask, they, based on historical case scenarios, they're estimating that it would reduce down to about $223,000 the subsequent year. So, the recommendation would be to refresh this year. There were also some comments made that if we refreshed this year, we would not refresh next year, and we would look for a two-year piece before we consider doing that again. So, those are a summary of the two meetings, a lot of discussion and talk, and then, there was consensus among, there was a majority consensus among both committees to pass those adoptions, which I believe Mike has in the board minutes.
Mr. Leary?
Yeah, I'd like to make two comments. First, Dr. Hamilton addressed some of those issues at the middle school graduation ceremony, moving up ceremony, and he emphasized the need for responsibility by the students and that they would be using it, you know, for the full four years. So, I think some of the problems may be addressed, and it will require discipline, and I think the Apple Care Plus program will help us in that matter. And the other thing is, and I was talking to Dr. Gorman about this at the moving up ceremony, we have an interesting race shaping up between Microsoft and Apple on the whole issue of tablets. So, it'll be a watchful waiting period and see how things shake out, but I have been involved in similar programs when I was working for Western Electric, and it's like riding a tiger. And you give it your best shot, and sometimes, you're right, and sometimes, you're wrong, but let's give it our best shot. And I think we had some rather forceful discussion in both committees, and I highly recommend that we go with what is being proposed.
Okay. Mr. Klein?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I just want to get a couple of things clear. When we had the curriculum meeting and the finance meeting, or at least the finance meeting I was part of, we were told that, I guess it was Apple was going to buy it back at 40% of what it cost us a year ago.
That's not correct information.
Okay, well, that's what I understood, and now, you're stating that it's going to be open for bids to see who wants to buy it.
Correct.
So, in other words, they're going to be buying roughly 2,000 units.
Exactly 2,000 units.
Exactly 2,000 units without knowing what we're going to get for it. It's obsolete, so why would somebody want to buy it? And if they buy it, they want to steal it. So, maybe you're saying 40% at the meeting, maybe you'll get 10%.
Mr. Klein, Apple had suggested some vendors that are in the business, so we had had discussions, not in any way, shape of soliciting, but those are the ones that they had recommended. So, they had contacted us to give us a general estimate of the value of the iPads.
Well, they also told us, or expressed what this unit would do prior to us adopting it, and it seems that most of what they said it would do, it doesn't do.
Not those companies. They're separate companies.
No, I'm talking about the unit itself. You mentioned the Apple Plus, two free replacements. So, am I understanding that we get two free replacements on two units of the 2,000?
No.
Then, how does that work?
Each unit, so this unit, for example, comes with Apple Care Plus.
Right.
If it breaks in any way, shape, or form, it costs $49, and it gets replaced for free, no shipping charge.
That's going to be on all the units. It's not just limited to...
Yeah, all, every unit, no shipping charges, and no other expenses in any way, shape, or form. So, it's just simple, replace once, if it happens again, replace twice, then onus goes on the student and the family.
Well, we also spoke, at least one of the committee meetings, one of the members made a suggestion of having the parents purchase them the freshman year of school, and this way, the student will take care of it, the parents will be responsible, and when the student graduates, he takes it with him. Have we thought about doing that?
That was a discussion that you brought up at the committee. Mr. Klein, this is not my bias, I'm just presenting the best solution that was, through research, to the board of education, and the one-to-one initiative was a commitment to that environment, and we said three to five years to see if it would improve student achievement, and that was a one-to-one learning environment initiative that was generated by the board of education. So, that's where we are. If it changes, then that's obviously up to the board of education.
Now, what really, really concerns me is the fact, if the unit we purchased a year ago is already well out of date and obsolete, what's going to happen the year after next? And we're committing to another two years.
Yeah, and again, I'm not an expert in the field. Some things happened this year in January that was unexpected. Apple basically became, took over the textbook industry in a lot of ways, or not took over, but they got involved in it. So, it was a redefinition of digital textbooks, and that came out of nowhere on January 19th. I actually remember talking to our sales representative and asking him what was going on, and he said, "I don't know, they wouldn't even tell me." And that happened, I think, in Manhattan on January 19th. So, there were some unexpected things that happened this year. I'll tell you the other piece that has really happened. There's been a rampant influx of getting these devices in public schools everywhere throughout the United States and worldwide, and I have lots of evidence and data. So, what was and what is now, you know, I don't know if it's luck or timing, but I'll just tell you that the new unit, I think, will be fine, but that's just my opinion. So, again, I don't, I'm not an expert in that.
Then, the last thing I just want to bring up is the fact of, if it is approved, are they going to put these units in the resource rooms?
Well, every student in Monroe, every student in the high school has one. I know that at the last board meeting, Ms. Rwell was here and spoke about some of the kids in the middle school and the special needs classes having access to them. The both committees, the second committee, talked about expansion into the lower grades in possibly three to five years, but we, the general consensus was, let's get it right at the high school before we just mass go out there and keep on spreading it. So, we needed a little bit more time to see the poignancy of it. I will tell you also, we successfully collected the iPads from the kids today. How many of you guys in the audience returned your iPads today? All right, are you guys, the rest of you guys seniors? All right, so seniors are tomorrow. So, we collected successfully, and I was part of the collection. Went very, very smooth. iPads were in really good shape from what I saw, from at least a batch that I collected from the kids. They returned the iPad, the case, the charger, and it went, I think, as smooth as can be. So, I did want to give a little kudos to Mr. Washington and Mr. Goodall and the team here at the high school.
Well, the reason why I brought that up on the resource rooms is any articles that I have read, and I'm talking about SBA, NJEA, and the normal newspapers, that the best successes with the iPad were the special ed classrooms, and many schools that adopted iPads only adopted them for special ed. So, that's all I have to say about the matter.
Mr. Leary?
Because the iPads were acquired using the funds from the referendum, that put a lot of constraints around a lot of the business decisions. I mean, we have, if we want to dispose of them, they have to go through a public auction. It's not any other kind of commercial arrangement, which is awkward, but we work our way through. And then, we're talking, how do we go forward and how do we manage the technology? And that is the tricky task. And as I said, I've had experience from this when I worked for Western Electric, and it takes a great deal of thought. I think Jeff Gorman and his crew are doing a good job, but hey, no one is perfect. And I think, in particular, the speech that Dr. Hamilton gave this afternoon to the students put things in the right frame of reference. Hey, this is your tool, this is what you're going to learn from, and you're responsible for it. And I think that will set the stage for probably better performance.
Anyone else on the board? Okay, seeing none, we will go to our next item, which is the public forum. Anyone in the public that wishes to speak on the agenda, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Since we have so many people here tonight, we're going to adhere to our three-minute time limit. Mr. Gorski has a timer that will go off after three minutes, and then, we ask you to please only come up once on each subject. So, if public forum is open, if anybody wishes to speak.
Hello, my name is Fallon Regan. My address is 10 Verdi Road, Monroe Township, New Jersey. We, the Monroe Township Class of 2012, respectfully request that Julianne Dinsmore be allowed to participate in our high school graduation. We understand the responsibility of consequences of one bad decision. We ask that it will not define her after a lifetime of good decisions. We submit this petition as a sign of support to our fellow classmate, who has excelled in Monroe Township's school system as a student, friend, athlete, and volunteer. As an 18-year-old, young adult, entering the world after high school, we realize life is not always fair, but we also realize life is not black and white either. This is not missing a football game, a cheerleading competition, or the class picnic. This is a 12-year commitment to her academic life. Graduation is the final celebration she has worked so hard to achieve. A criminal being charged with a first offense often gets probation. There was no malice intended. She didn't steal, cheat, or hurt anyone but herself. We ask you to do the right thing and let her walk. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Does anyone else in the public wish to speak?
Hello, Denise Quinn, Three Evergreen Terrace, Monroe, also a teacher here in District, and really like it here. But I do want to speak up about one thing I want you to keep in mind, and this goes to what Mr. Klein had said. I have three children at the high school right now. My one daughter's going to graduate, that'll leave two here. It may not seem like a lot to ask parents to pay for things, but with three children multiplied by three, I had trouble with the deposits on the iPads this year. As a single mom struggling, everything multiplied by three is a lot of money. So, when you make the decisions about the deposits, and maybe you're thinking about it for one child, remember that some of us have more than one, and it really is a burden sometimes. So, just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public?
Lara Libroskets, 5 Scott Drive. I have a question about the iPads, because I was here when you presented it a while ago about the new iPads. What is the, are you going to come back in six months or eight months and then present again? Because I don't know that the town is going to support every year constantly buying and selling of iPads, and I know you're not in the business of buying and selling, but you made a decision, I guess, you're going to sell 2,000 iPads. How many iPads were purchased?
2,000.
2,000 were purchased, and you have 2,000 to sell. Okay, and the benefit, because I did look at the agenda, I did look online, what is the benefit of the new iPad versus the old iPad? I know it's 4G, and I know it's got better retina display, but what else is the, you know, because it's going to be, now, this one is not in the referendum, so this will be, taxpayers will see an increase?
This is a general, this is a commitment to the general budget for digital technology. So, three main driving reasons, twice as much memory, the Apple Care protection piece, which we, based on breakages, would yield a significant savings, and that to sustain it and put it in the general budget for each year, and more so, if not now, next year, we want it to be on the front end because estimates are is that they will depreciate significantly in the next year. If we get through this year and next year, we've basically made 2/3... If we get through this year and next year, we've basically made two-thirds of the payments on the first batch. So then the board has the right to say, this worked, this didn't work, there's a new tablet out there, whatever it might be. Also, I think I mentioned in my presentation that there was a movement that we don't do this every year, but that the circumstances and part of the lessons learned because we didn't start out in a lease purchase. That's the modality, that's the main way, but because of the referendum, we had to purchase, and that was the opportunity. So now we're trying to get it towards the way the initiative was presented to the board last year and its intent, which is to start entering in a lease purchase. So there is sustainability to the initiative. And the kids get the best and the newest.
No, I understand that. I just don't know that we're going to have the town support purchasing, not even a year later, you know, eight months later, 2,000 more. And then I guess my next quick question about the iPads are, when we were told initially about the $50 or $49 deposit, it was for the iPad, the case, and the, I know my daughter put a heart on her case, and I got a bill for $35. And I said, I called up and I asked if I could get it back because I might be able to clean it before I pay $35. And they said, "Well, we're getting new ones next year." So I guess my question is, if we're purchasing new ones, why are we charging, and I spoke to the tech department, why are we charging taxpayers if we're not going to use them anyway? And, you know, again, I figured out if it's a year old, even if we get the new ones, the cases still should be in pretty good condition. Why are we purchasing $70,000 worth of iPad cases?
We're not.
We're not? Okay, so that was a mistake then?
We're not. The kids, through orientation, were told repeatedly that on not to damage the cases, draw on and put on stickers, the whole nine yards, and it was clearly delineated of the cost. What's happened is that in the case, through natural use, it frays, the company will take them back and replace it for no charge.
Okay. So they're not, the town isn't purchasing new ones?
No.
Now, my next question then is, can we get back the ones from, if my, why would I pay $35 now and then next year? Shouldn't you get back the same case you used this year?
Well, we're going to take that case, and we're going to give it back to the company and hopefully get a new one for it. But hers is damaged, she defaced it, so it's not, but it's not natural damage. So there's accidental, there's just usage damage.
Okay, so with a $50 fee, the insurance fee covered that?
The insurance fee covered one replacement during the year.
Okay, so she hasn't used that, then that should be able to be used?
No, not for the case, for the actual iPad.
Was that clarified to all parents during the meeting?
It's all in the acceptable use policy in the paperwork that was sent home to you in the beginning of the year and on our website.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
My name is Doug Boye, 4 Tamarack Road. When I saw the resolution to sell the 2,000 iPads, I just want to tell you, as a member of the public, I was shocked. How much did we pay for those iPads out of referendum money?
1.136.
Now, I would think that resolution money would be spent on things of a more permanent nature.
That's right.
And it would strike me, based on the comments that I have heard this evening, that with all due respect, that possibly the board rushed into something, and you're now backpedaling to get into a different way of keeping up with the technology. And as Mr. Leary mentioned, Microsoft is coming out with its own tablet. And from what I've seen in a recent article, there's a very nice keyboard capability with that tablet. And yet, we're going to, for this coming fall, purchase more Apples that we're then going to be stuck with for two years. So all, I'm not raising a question, I am just basically saying, as a member of the public, I do not believe that a wise decision was made to use referendum money to purchase 2,000 iPads, which six months later, you have now decided are no longer valid, they're no longer reliable in terms of being up to par. I would have thought that that would have been looked at prior to this. But I do have a couple of questions. On the agenda, you're talking about the cost of membership, or you're talking about the membership in the NJSAA, which I am familiar with, and I know practically every high school belongs to that. But you do not in that resolution indicate what the cost of that membership is, and I think that the public would appreciate knowing what the cost of that membership is. Likewise, in Item F under the Business Administrators Report, F1, we talk about the cost of, you talk about PayServe. I think the public would appreciate knowing the approximate total cost on an annual basis for that service. My understanding of that is it's the processing of the payroll checks. Also, in F3, you talk about approving the use of police for some of the functions. I know all high schools do that. But once again, I think the public would appreciate knowing the estimated total cost for police services for the district. So those are my questions, and that's my comment, and I do thank you for your time.
You're welcome. I'm going to give this to Mr. Gorski, since it's under his report.
Okay. Mr. Boye, certainly F1 for PayServe Inc. You're correct. PayServe Inc. is a payroll processor, and what they do is crunch the payroll data that's compiled in-house and prepare paychecks, prepare the direct deposit transfers, prepare the quarterly tax returns, federal, state, Pennsylvania, and prepare the W2s at year end. The annual budgeted amount for PayServe is in the vicinity of $25,000, and they have never exceeded what we have budgeted. The increase here, I believe, is two cents per check above last year's rate, which, in my opinion, was conservatively negotiated in the board's best interest, so I made the The police department, that's on an as-needed basis. I would actually have to check that annual figure offhand because I don't have it committed to memory, but I could say it's certainly in the vicinity of $7,500 or less. And it's an invaluable security service that they provide, and we work very collaboratively with the township on that shared service agreement with them for the services. And where was the first item you required?
NJSAA.
Where is that in the agenda?
It's Item J under Board Action.
Mr. Prey, I'm going to look at my backup information and see if that amount is included in there. I'll be able to either get that answer to you shortly, or I'll have to get back to you on it.
Okay, is there anyone else from the public?
Can I just say something before we move?
Seeing no one for the public forum, we'll close public forum. Now, Mr. Chiarella?
I just want to, I have to get something off my chest here because I was shocked by this, and I must have missed it. Mr. McHugh? You've had all of my children here in your class, they love you, and you're a wonderful teacher. And I'm shocked that you're retiring? You're not retiring?
I stand corrected. I thought that was a letter.
Oh. I just asked everybody, they told me, well, then I'm sorry, but I wanted to talk you out of it because I still, I thought, I thought for sure you were going to have, I have one more coming through, and then I thought for sure that maybe my kids did something to cause this. All right, thank you. Thank you. Then that's it, that's all I have.
That's how rumors spread, right?
Sorry, Ken.
Okay, so now that we've closed public forum, and Ken's gotten that out of his system, and Ms. McHugh is going to stay, we'll go to number 12 on the agenda. Closed session resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects. Personnel, board interviews for childcare director, head teacher, personnel involving non-affiliated staff appointments and salaries for the 2012-2013 school year, receiving attorney advice with respect to these matters. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. Motion in a second. Mr. Klein, Mr.?
Mr.?
Yeah, yes. Mr. Godman, whoa. It's a senior moment, yeah. I'm getting older, I have a birthday coming up soon. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? At this time, the board will go into closed session. At this time, the board will reconvene into public session and go to the superintendent's report with Dr. Hamilton.
Okay, thank you. My report tonight includes the second part of our annual HIB reporting as required at the public meeting. The law requires that the superintendent report to the board all acts of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying which occurred since the previous reporting period. The report which you received as an attachment, and copies have been made available for the public, indicates the number of reports, the nature of those reports, the names of those who investigated the reports, the type or discipline imposed, and any other training provided. That report also includes the data broken down by school. So there's a motion in my report asking you to just approve that, again, as required. You'll also see in the superintendent's report the enrollment data. We have approximately 220 students more this year than we did the same period last year. Mr. Gorski and I have begun the process of looking at the future implications of this current enrollment trend. And also, I sent out an alert message to our parents, asking them to send a letter to Senator Greenstein regarding the proposed changes to the school funding formula. If you have not had a chance to do so, please go to our website and click on Fight for Funding. It is very time-sensitive. I also shared with the board a letter I sent directly, a little different than the generic letter. Also included in your report are the enrollment numbers for those youngsters that are placed out of district, the number of, the dates and number of fire drill and lockdown drills as required by law. And that moves me into the personnel report. So moving to the personnel report, Madam Board President and members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that Personnel Items A through TT be approved by roll call vote.
TT?
Double T.
TT.
Ms. Antelis, Mr. Chiarella, any comments or questions for Dr. Hamilton?
Through what?
Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes to all items, no on double O, Sharon Biggs.
So noted. Mr. Klein?
Yes on everything, no on double zero, or double O, Sharon Biggs.
Mr. Leary?
Yes to all items except in double O, line four, Sharon Biggs.
Mr. Masters?
Yes to all, I'll abstain on OO.
Abstain on?
The whole thing.
So you're abstaining on the entire personnel report?
No, OO, yeah.
Oh, abstain on OO, so noted. Mr. Tesler?
Yes on everything, abstain on OO.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes on everything, no on double O, Sharon Biggs.
Ms. Antelis?
Yes on all items, and recuse myself on Items EE, PP, and TT.
Please repeat that, EE?
EE, E like Echo, double E, P like Papa, double P, and T like Tom, double T.
So noted, thank you. Mr. Braverman?
Yes on all items except on double O, the administrative assistants, no.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes on all items except double O, Sharon Biggs.
Madam Board President, motion passes with the exception of Item OO. Sharon Biggs.
Thank you.
I'd like to read into the record Personnel Action Item UU as follows. It is recommended by the Superintendent of Schools that Sharon Jensen be approved as the Program Director Head Teacher for the Monroe Employee Childcare Academy at a salary of $46,000 effective July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013, and that the salary, and that the Superintendent and the Business Administrative Board Secretary be authorized to implement this action of the board.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Masters, comments, questions? Then we'll have roll call.
Mr. Kaufman? Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
I abstain, this doesn't pertain to me.
So noted. Ms. Antelis?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion to appoint Sharon Jensen, passes.
Moving on to Board Action Items, Madam Board President, members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the superintendent that Action, Board Action Items A through N be approved by roll call vote.
Ken? Is that your action?
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Kaufman, and second by Mr. Masters. Any comments or questions for this, Mr. Braverman?
I have a question on F. The Leading for Learning Grant. We're going to receive $20,000, is that correct?
Yes.
And then we're going to pay, we're receiving $21,000, and then we're paying $6,667 a year for three years, each for three years. And then we're paying for all their travel expenses, which is going to come to $11,550 each year for the first two years, the third year $3,900, plus travel expenses and some other things. When do we get the Brooklyn Bridge? I frequently get something on my email that says, "I'm here in South Africa, and for only $20,000, I'll send you 68 million to deposit for me." That sounds like one of those deals. It's just a great thing. We're going to get $21,000, and it's going to cost us about 35. It's nuts.
It's a matching grant.
We're not matching it. We're paying a heck of a lot more than $20,000, $21,000. So for that one, I'll be voting no.
Mr. Klein?
Something I really don't understand is that I've been here, is there's always some sort of initiative to improve the teaching, whether it's Avid, whether it's something like this. We have excellent supervisors of the subjects that should be drawing up the curriculum. We have excellent teachers who should be teaching it. Why do we keep going after all these other programs? Why don't we just let the teachers teach? They have good leadership in the upper, whether it be the superintendent or the assistant superintendent. You've got excellent curriculum supervisors that are surely capable of writing curriculum to be taught, and let the teachers teach. It worked for so many years, and why all of a sudden, every time we turn around, we're looking for, it's either a learning this, or it's the Avid, or it's another program? Let the teachers teach. Draw the curriculum and let them teach.
Well, this is how they got to be excellent, because this is a coaching grant that's designed for the superintendent, the principals, and the supervisors. So this is not a teacher-driven initiative. This is to provide a coaching model for those folks that you just referenced. And how they get to be experts is by ongoing professional development, and this is another vehicle to do that. And this information isn't new. This has been presented in at least two, maybe three, board confidentials outlining This has been presented in at least two, maybe three, board confidentials outlining this grant.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll have a roll call. Oh, Mr. Masters?
Sorry, I didn't mean, would we be sending them even if they didn't get the grant?
Say it again?
Would we be sending them?
No.
Roll call?
Roll call for Board Action Items A through N. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Everything except F, no on F.
So noted. Mr. Leary?
Just give me a second. Passing it, I'll wait.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Oh, shit. Yes on everything except F, no.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Back to Mr. Leary.
Everything but F.
So noted. Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through N passes.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, then we will go to the Business Administration's report, Mr. Gorsky. You have a long one this time.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Board President and members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through LL be approved by consent roll call.
Is there a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Klein, Mr. Leary, any comments or questions for Mr. Gorsky? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes on everything except KK.
So noted. Mr. Leary?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Yes.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through LL passes.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
Um, do you have to read that whole resolution out? No, it was all distributed to the board. It's all included in the report.
Okay, we'll go to Board President's report, and mine's going to be very short, because it's been a long night. In regard to committees, there's been some concern from members of the public that they can't find our committees' agendas on the website, and it's important that anybody who has a committee meeting set up should please let Mr. Gorsky's secretary, Joyce Sweeney, know, because she's the one that gets the information on the website. If she doesn't know, it won't be able to, we won't be able to put it on the website. So anytime there's a committee set up, even if it's, like, I don't know, Mr. Kaufman, if you have yours on a regular basis every month, she still has to know that. So just
Do we have to tell her to post it, or does the generator of my curriculum agenda?
No, it's up to the committee chair.
All right, can you give it to her at every committee meeting?
To just let Joyce know, so that if the public is looking for buildings and grounds, so they know what time it is and what date it is, and this way they'll be able to attend.
Madam Board President, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Rather than to place that burden on committee chairs, that information is always very easily accessible, because it's in the confidential. We could just add a step in the protocol to have that information emailed to Mr. Gorsky's office.
Okay, and it's just the, not the whole confidential, but just
Right, exactly. Just the meeting schedule, it's in there every week.
Okay, not a problem. So that concludes my report. Committee reports, are there any committees that need to be poured out today? Mr. Kaufman?
I'll be brief. We talked a little about the iPad Initiative that we're going to move forward with. Another item we talked about, as fans of Board of Ed meetings, there was a few board meetings ago, some students that came in to talk about scheduling questions and AP classes, and Rob Goodall is here this evening to talk to some of these items.
He must have special guests.
I do, I like to, you know.
I didn't see any
Just to farm it up a little bit. Outsource, you know, it's big.
Hello, good evening. In response to the students feeling that they did not have enough access to rigorous courses, mainly AP courses during their four years at the high school, we made a couple of programmatic changes to the program of studies. We have offered as a pilot this year, a Advanced Calculus A, B, B, C class that will run daily, A and B day, for 10 credits to students identified on recommendation for the teacher. After the committee meeting, I met with those identified students, and they are reporting out to their guidance counselors if they wanted to switch into this course selection. In addition, we discussed the potential with the eighth grade students who are signed up for AP Biology when they enter the high school next year, if they were interested in taking a placement test during the summer administered by our AP teachers to determine if they could waive their requirement of Honors Bio before they take AP Bio. Many, many students are interested in this. We will be sending out a letter next week inviting them to those days so they can take that assessment. It should be noted that all the students, in order to gain this waiver, must pass this assessment. We would not want to put students who are not quite prepared to take AP Biology in a place where they, you know, could potentially be in a bad spot for them, so they would continue to take Honors Biology. But there's been a good response to that, in doing so, by allowing kids to take AP Biology for their requirement during the course of their time over the next four years, that would allow them some extra course selections, which the other students from a couple of months ago were asking about. So I think this is a good response to their concerns, and we're implementing this gradually. We'll see how it goes, and potentially down the line, we could be doing this with other courses such as AP Chemistry and AP Physics. This would allow them more access to AP classes. So it's a nice compromise, I think, making sure our kids are successful and putting them in the right place to be successful.
And hopefully, chain of command will be taught.
Well, I think lesson learned on that.
Any questions for Mr. Goodall? None.
Great, thank you.
Any other, any other committee reports?
We discussed
Mr. Leary?
The iPad situation that
In finance.
Jeff covered in great detail, so he did a good job, and I'll just shut up.
Okay, we'll go to number 17. Is there any business by any member of the Board of Education needs to be discussed? Ms. Patrice?
I just, I know this is insignificant, but I brought it up once before. At the end of the out-of-district placement, it says both the Monroe student and Jamesburg student have graduated but attend JFK for transitional services. Jamesburg pays for all out-of-district placements, and they're, the kids are under the assumption when they get to Monroe, they're Monroe Township High School students. So I don't know why the separation is made, and I know, I did ask Mike, and he didn't know, because I guess Wayne had been doing it, Mike. But my son, Brian, who does attend JFK, was reading the agenda, because he had a personal reason for coming tonight, and he wanted to know who the Jamesburg student was, since he goes to Monroe Township High School, or he graduated from Monroe, and he is the JFK student. So just again, even for the record, if we could not differentiate, even for Brian's sake, who considers himself a Monroe Township student, but I just don't think it's necessary. We pay, so it's not as if you're clarifying the payment schedule, and they do consider themselves Monroe Township High School students when they come up here, residing in Jamesburg, but a Monroe Township student, so, just for the record.
I agree, and 100% you're accurate. Jamesburg has always paid for all of those out-of-district tuition costs. They're not even invoiced to Monroe, they go directly to Jamesburg.
Just for his
Yes.
Sighty.
Piece of pie.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to number 18, closed session. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects. Student matter, student number 70266, student matters harassment, intimidation, and bullying, number 124 through 131. Personnel, further discussion on the superintendent evaluation matter and receiving, we're not receiving attorney advice, the superintendent evaluation. The discussion conducted in closed session can be discussed, disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved. I need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Mr. Tesler, Mr. Leary, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And the board will move into closed session again. Action. At this time, the board will reconvene into public session, and we will go to the public forum. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we will still stick to our three minutes. Adhere to our three minutes.
Good evening. Laura Libroskiets, Five Scott Drive. Just a real quick thing. I appeared in front of the board 11 business days ago, making a request. I still haven't gotten a formal answer to my two requests, one to allow my daughter to do senior option, and one to do a remedial program for the summer. Brooke didn't break any laws, she didn't violate any school policies. All she did was not do as well on a math test as we would have liked. Asking again to have something, to find out why it's taking so long to respond. I know that one of the questions about senior option was if it was a law. We found out it is not. I did a little due diligence on my own. I'm going to read the response from the New Jersey Department of Ed, and then I'm going to ask, you can keep it, as your own copy I gave, I supplied it to Dr. Hamilton yesterday. It was from Veronica Orsi, which is the HESPA Coordinator from the Office of Assessments, New Jersey Department of Ed. I spoke to her on the phone as well. She said anyone can call her if they have a question. Dear Mrs. Getz, as per your email request for information that appears below, there is neither a law nor an administrative code that restricts participation in senior option. Thank you. Thank you. When do you think I'm going to get a response? I know, I don't understand if there's no law, and there's no policy, and there's not one written word in any Monroe Township form, whether it be a pamphlet, or a policy, or a handbook, or a curriculum guide, anywhere does it say you have to pass the HESPA to do senior option?
Hi, Mrs. Getz. I talked to Mr. Goodall before he left, and he said that if you'll get, reach out to him next Tuesday, he said he'll work with you, and you could get some of the due diligence that you're looking for. I don't know what the answer is, per se, but I know that it was a positive conversation that I had with him about connecting with you based off of the information that you gave.
Okay, just a quick question, because I didn't, you know, I've already gone that route with Mr. Goodall, and I appeared in front of the Board of Education, asking the board and Dr. Hamilton. So I understand that I will meet with him, and he told me that he would be more than happy. He's always, he's been very cooperative about meeting with me, but I didn't ask him. I came to the board because I've already gone that route, and we didn't get anywhere. And he said it was a state law, and I'm telling you now, we know from the Department of Ed it's not.
Right, in light of that information that you gave us.
Okay, thank you.
Then we're going to put it back in the building principal's hands, and then go from there. But that's in light of what you gave us today.
Okay.
On not having the
So he'll make the decision?
He'll collaborate with me, and we'll connect with you. And anything I do is with Dr. Hamilton as well.
Excuse me, miss, I've got a nosebleed.
That's okay. Is that, is that the correct, I'm just curious, if someone makes a request to the Board of Ed, is that the policy that goes back to the building principal?
I don't have an answer.
Because I can tell you, the policy reads 10 days, I should have gotten a response if it's at the building principal's level. If it's at the board, then you have some extra time. But I requested 11 days ago, the board. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but what is the correct policy if I'm making a request to the board? Does it go back to the building principal? It would go back to, we would tell Dr. Hamilton, and he would go to the person that needs to give you the answers, because the board doesn't have that answer. The board can't tell you. He, he will tell you, or get back to you. He's not here right now, he
I do believe he told you that he needed
Due diligence.
Right, so he asked you for a couple of days, right?
Mr. Goodall asked me for a couple of days. Mr., Dr. Hamilton wanted to do due diligence, so I don't know exactly, I'm just asking what that means.
So that means he's going to do a thorough job of getting you the right information that you need to move forward.
Okay, so I'll ask one more question. When do you think I'll hear from, talk to Mr. Goodall, next week?
He told me Tuesday.
Okay.
Jennifer Hijack, 12-second more court. I'm sorry to take your time so late at night, but I've waited this long, so I'm going to say what's on my mind. I'm going to ask the board, why is it that you've done such a good job of letting the public know when you change the date on a calendar, connect ed calls, emails, paper copies? The word is not out about the cut in busing. I was at my son's woodland band concert, and no one after the concert knew about it. People were gathering around me to get the information. Today, a letter came home from the band person, letting the public know that there is no zero period busing. Today, my neighbors are very upset, some of them, because they've just paid for the rental agreement for their instruments, and they're now wanting to contact the company to get their money back, because they had no idea that there wasn't going to be zero period busing, even though I'd been saying it to them for a while, I don't know why they haven't heard it. And my other comment is directly to Dr. Hamilton. On May 5, I emailed him a, hopefully a solution or an option, to give these parents, working parents, especially for the after-school cut of busing, a pay-to-stay option. I know we had said pay to participate didn't work, pay to ride was a, was a legal issue. I was kind of upset that I never even got a response back from Dr. Hamilton. I was hoping that, you know, I also copied Mr. Gorsky and Mr. Kaufman, because he said, you know, think out of the box. I'm trying to help you, help us, work together, isn't that what the Board of Ed, the public are supposed to do? I mean, I don't know, did you not get that email? It didn't bounce back to me.
Honestly, I have a pretty good reputation with returning emails and phone calls. I don't recall that email, so I apologize for that.
I have a copy with me. I will hand that to you directly. But I'm surprised, because I copied a couple of people too. Mr. Gorsky?
Ms. Hijack, I have specific recollection of discussing this with you at a public forum, and advising you that the pay to participate busing recommendation that you made was strongly discouraging
Right, 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 no, I agree with that. That's why I came up with, I'm shocked, because I didn't, usually when my email doesn't go through, I get a bounce back, saying like, undeliverable, but I didn't get that, so I
If it was instant answer, then, you know.
Excuse me, she's got the floor. Excuse me. Okay, I will clarify. I'm not asking about pay to ride anymore, I'm saying a pay to stay option, to let the kids go to a study hall or a library and stay until a working parent can come get them. I'm sorry that you never got this letter, I was under the assumption you did. I do have a paper hard copy here, and I will hand it to you in two seconds, okay? And then hopefully, somebody can answer my question. I'm just trying to come up with something to offer these parents, because in September, when word gets out that there is no busing, I'm worried that there's going to be chaos, and there's no options for us.
With regard to the communication, we had numerous budget meetings, we had finance committee meetings, we had a budget steering committee, three different ones. I recall three different paper articles, all discussing the cuts. It was a front-page article in the newspaper.
Okay, but, but nothing hard copied directly to the parents, like there is when you make the change of the calendar. I mean, that's what I'm saying, that, I mean, I would say, change in a calendar is less important than this. This is a major issue.
Okay, we'll look into it.
I'll get you that copy.
Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak? Okay, let me close public session, and see if you really want to speak. Maybe not. Seeing no one, we will close the public forum. Mr. Klein, did you wish to speak?
Please.
Okay.
Jim?
Jim?
From the Home News? I'd like you to note that this district was forced by the New Jersey Department of Education to cut zero period busing and after-school busing by the state. And I want you to understand that the state only gives us $300 a student, when Old Bridge, which is an FG district, receives over $5,000 a student. Why should these parents and these students be kept from doing band from doing band, doing clubs, or whatever is involved in zero-period before school starts, and what goes on after school? They call us, what do we call, we're over adequacy, because we provide this. These kids are entitled to it, yet the state doesn't want to do anything about it. So that's something I would love to see a print. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no one in the public forum, which is closed, our next scheduled public Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, July 25, 2012, 7 o'clock PM at the high school. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Kaufman, Mr. Klein, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Abstentions, the meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.